I'd like to, are you all set? Okay. I'd like to start the Shasberry School Board meeting to order at 6:17. And we will begin with citizens' comments.
I'd just like to say I really like the nameplates on the table.
Getting used to it. We have them everywhere else, so we might as well have them here.
That's a nice touch.
Yep. Looks good.
Very special.
Okay.
You and I were left out. Supposed to be board members. We really should.
Well, that's all right. We'll have them next time. Okay. We'll go into the financial. If there's no other county, yeah, there's no other county. Okay, the Treasury's report for March is enclosed. Any questions on it? Anybody? No? Hearing none? Motion just to accept?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Budget status report. Dave, did Mary Lee get ahold of you? Because I caught your email.
Uh, no. Mary Lee didn't get ahold of me, but I did hear from, I think it was Alice?
Yeah.
And Mary and I were just chatting about it.
Because I thought that was in March's. Anyway, we had two back then.
We had, last month, we had a report for the February period, and then a report that showed March 1st to March 7th, or whatever the date was.
Okay.
And my point was that, historically, anyway, I think we've seen a report that shows 30 days a month, for the previous month, essentially, and under the current. So that if you look in the columns labeled "current," you're seeing a 30-day time period, which, you know, might or might not be useful from time to time to have an actual 30, you know, full 30 days to look at. So I don't know why we might have changed that, or whether it's, again, whether it's a good or bad thing to have changed it.
Okay. Well, I can ask, well, actually, Rick's not here, but we could ask Rick a question.
Yeah, I was here to take the back.
Okay, good.
I had another question, too.
Yeah, go ahead.
And this is in the direct instruction sped section, which is on our page five, towards the bottom.
Yep.
So, the line that's labeled "resource room," we budgeted a certain amount there, $411,000, and the year-to-date number is now full of $411,000. There's, I guess there's another $60 that hasn't been spent.
Yeah, I see that.
So, and I'm just curious to know, I know we've talked about this in the past, and it's probably been explained in the past, but what that line item represents, and the fact that we're already now close to reaching the budgeted amount, will there be more money that we need to spend before the end of the year? How does it work? How does the timing work?
No, those will all then build out. The last billing was in March.
So there won't be another, so how does the, how does the timing work, then, during the course of the year?
It's July, December, and March.
Okay. So it's three installments. Okay. Thank you.
There is an asterisk to that question, to that answer. As a result of what's taking place right now in central office, if there ends up being a deficit in your sped resource room, which in Shasberry, I currently do not see one. But then there'll have to be a discussion whether the board wants to have a supplemental assessment to cover that, or if you want to carry that deficit into the following year budget process.
What are the additional expenses that were unexpected?
I don't, as I said, right now, I don't see anything in Shasberry. There's been a lot of documentation. I've got to be careful from an open session for issue, and I'd be happy to go into executive session very quickly, because I do have to run to another meeting. But there were some obligations made that we were unaware of, that we are currently uncovered.
Remembering that in January, we added a person, would that impact you?
Yeah.
Remember that in January, we added a para educator
That would, that would.
That could impact.
That would, that would impact.
And you may have forgotten that.
Say that again, Jim.
In January, we added a para educator based upon a student need moving to our district that was not within the budgeted amount from the last March.
But is that the line that that would hit? Well.
That would be the line. I'm pretty, that's why I, yeah.
I make a motion to an executive session.
Second?
Second.
Second. Okay. And the reason?
To discuss this
Contract.
Contract issue.
Yep. All in favor? Aye. Who can we go?
Yeah, we can go.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll do this all over again. I need a motion to go back into open session, please.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now we're back in open session. Okay. I don't have the new business.
We approved the budget.
Thanks, Rick. Go to number four, personnel. And Jim, authorization for possible reduction in force?
I think Donna may speak to it. I think it's enlightening, but I'll let Donna speak.
Okay.
I think that it's really looking forward to a very complicated budget season, where BSD has not approved their budget at this point. And if, in fact, that may mean that we will need to give out notices for reduction in force, it's highly unlikely that it would be anything that affects you here in Shasberry. But when those things are done by contract, sometimes it's, it's very hard to predict by seniority where the, where those potential RIF notices would be sent. So it's really that every board has to give approval, just, it's really just to authorize if there would need to be a reduction.
Of SU employees. SU employees.
Right.
So can you just explain the language? Authorize possible reduction in force? Force being employees?
Yes.
Okay.
And it really is advance, is to give advance notice that it may be possible if we are not able to meet the contract dates according to what is written in the contract. If we have to give notice by May 15, and the BSD and/or SU budget is unsettled, then there would have to be some action prior to the date of the contract. And that's why we're asking for authorization, as I understand it.
So, by unsettled, Donna, do you mean if the, if there is no budget, BSD budget passed by then? Or if there is a budget that's passed that requires a change in the SU budget?
Yes. There, you know, they're still, like, open, because it has not been voted on and passed by, for the BSD. So that still needs to go to, to the voters. So that's, and if they pass it within a timely way, that's good. But if they don't, there is still a possibility that it might not meet the contract dates. That's just the safety mechanism of sending out slips for people of potential reduction.
Frank? Yeah. No, um, yeah, when I read it, I anticipated that was probably one of the reasons. I don't see how that has any impact on Shasberry Elementary.
It's highly unlikely.
And, and the reason, and, and so I would not, frankly, unless I hear more in the discussion that we have right now, be in favor of it. And the reason is that the voters of Shasberry did indeed pass their budget. We did indeed authorize the sped spending, and actually, the big increase that came out of the SU this year, for a lot of reasons, but it was a big increase. And the result of Bennington not passing their budget, and them, they having to require, having required cuts, the way at my process is, employees of the SU are employees of the SU. And if Bennington, for example, has to have a reduction in force, if that, if their reduction in force requires some maybe bumping of employees, that's fine. But the overall budget, there should be no reduction in force in Shasberry. We should have the same number of students. We should not authorize a reduction in force in Shasberry. And that's what this board is, you know, I think, being asked to do. I know it may dovetail into Bennington, but I don't want it to be voted on as that. It's important for us to maintain the level of education that was budgeted, and we expect to have those number of special education students, and requires for teachers, and paras, and resource room, and whatever other resources we need. We voted for it. We paid for it. We should get it.
Dave? Yeah, I guess I'm not clearly seeing, and maybe a concrete illustration would help, but I'm not clearly seeing how, even if BSD has no budget, or even if there is a smaller SU budget that the SU board approves, and that, you know, and that ultimately means that BSD has a budget that's passed, how would, you know, how would that affect us? And is it?
I don't think that it would reduce any numbers of employees that you have. Sometimes, and I have seen this in my own history as an educator, that it's very hard to predict where those changes will occur. Because, like you said, there is, you know, a whole bumping process according to contract, that it may mean there are changes.
Oh, changes, yes. So maybe, there may be, maybe every para or that's in Shasberry goes to middle school because of their particular seniority.
Right.
It's just as an example.
Right, yeah.
However, however, the same amount of paras should remain in Shasberry.
But this is only an authorization if they had to send out notices to everyone, which would be a list to a broader group of people than it would even actually affect because of the way the seniority affects the reduction in force. Because, for instance, if you had a math specialist teacher that you couldn't lose, then they would have to keep that person. It might mean someone else. And it just, it's just very hard to predict who it will actually mean. But I, and this is only to authorize notification.
Could I just add one quick, or do you want to go first, Jim?
Doesn't matter.
Where it could have an impact, Pat, here in Shasberry, I think you have to look beyond just the SU Special Education Department. And that's basically what I think we're thinking of right now. Where it could have an impact would be the federally funded title teachers, where there could be, because they're not included in the Shasberry budget, there could be an impact with a reduction in the number of titled people serving Shasberry. So there is a direct relationship to service to our students. Or could be. Could be.
But, but those titled dollars, or those titled teachers, were in the budget?
No, they're not.
So, my concern is that it's just so vague. Why, don't we usually approve these things as, on an individual basis?
Yes, but this is only to authorize you to send out a notice that, to a broader group of people who may be affected by the budget.
If the board, if the board today doesn't approve that authorization, what would that mean for?
I can try to get more clarification for you, and bring it back again if we have to. I just understood that every board had to authorize the sending out of notices, basically, and to alert you that there may be an instance where that will need to occur because of timelines in the contract.
I think, I think it should be more specific to just Shasberry, then, as a statement. As something that we're approving.
Should it?
I mean, I understand that it's with the SU, but, go ahead.
Yeah, should it, this, I'm taking as these, this is just for the SV, the SU. Obviously, the title people are employed under SVSU.
That's correct.
So, and we have, how many students here that we, we need those services, Jim? Just roughly, I mean?
Forty percent.
Forty percent.
Are, would be directly eligible based upon free and reduced lunch. That's what drives our, the number of people we get here, the professionals.
But, but just for, really, for clarifying, we just had the budget a month ago. I, I, the title dollars flow through the SU. Okay. But as part of the budget process, part of those assessments that hit our dollars, when we do the budget in Shasberry, and it says your budget is X number of dollars, and your tax rate will be this, part of that, those budgeted dollars are a flow-through of those title dollars to Shasberry.
They're not.
I could be wrong. I probably am.
Yeah, it is wrong, because, I just checked with Mary.
Yeah, that's fine.
And Mary could answer, but only because I did this sort of job, title does not flow through SU. It's a standalone budget.
Oh.
With standalone dollars being paid out to those people.
So who pays for it?
Controlled by the SU.
So who pays for it?
The federal government.
Federal government.
Okay.
But this isn't even saying title. This isn't saying special education. It's not saying anything. It's just possible reduction in force.
Could, could we put, I mean, we're going to have to have another meeting here, even because of the superintendent's evaluation thing. Could we get more clarification?
Sure.
And, and so the board is comfortable with that? And we can do that, then?
And I'm just going to say that maybe further clarification on that specific example that you gave, Jim, because I, again, I'm not seeing why Bennington's situation
affects our title.
Why Bennington's situation, their budget situation, would affect our title teachers. I mean, if they failed to have a budget.
It's not within their budget, though, David.
So why would that affect our title teachers at all?
If, if you're talking strictly title money right now, and, so, I mean, because there's a difference in.
Just because you used that as an example.
The SU, well, but it flows together. But when you talked about authorization for possible reduction, I would not want the teachers nor the public to think that we're talking about one particular group, SU employed through SU assessment. It goes beyond that, and another pool of money, title money, and those titled teachers. If the feds send us less money to the state, and the state sends our SU less money, it will have a direct impact on every single school in some way. It may not mean fewer teachers at some schools, but other services will be impacted, professional development, and on and on.
Does this have something to do with sequestration?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I wasn't hearing that at all. I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about Bennington's budget.
More about the un, the open budgets that have not been voted on, and have not been rejected.
Board, go ahead, Larry.
What would our responsibilities be if we didn't RIF this entire group? If it went by, and in fact, we didn't receive the money, aren't we just saying we'd be obligated to keep those folks employed?
And I think that, that's, that's the hard thing to differentiate. This is not about the people that you have here, but it's about how many, how many positions, well, it's a difference between how many positions you have and who is filling them. And that's what happens with the contract. If there are people, it goes by seniority, and it's very defined in the contract about who will be laid off. And it is never clear who it is going to be until you know exactly how many positions are, will need to be laid off, and then you figure out according to the seniority who that's going to be. So you may have all the same number of people here, but if someone was the last one hired, you may get someone new here because of the contract. And like I said, it's, it's highly unlikely, but we have to be safe in terms of what we have for the contract, and meeting those deadlines that are in the contract.
I'm not sure if it'll add any clarity to the, to the, what we're talking about, the issue. But a practice that is relatively new, within the last three years, that this board has taken action upon, is the authorization to hire a title teacher, which you folks then voted on and said, yes, we need it. It's directly related to here, so it's a little different. And then sent that on to the SU board, saying, we need that person, we've authorized it. You couldn't vote on it, because you don't have control over it. So it's kind of like that, if that, if that's helpful.
Yeah, that's true.
I think I understand it better. It's that we'll still have that service, but maybe somebody else delivering it. Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. Now I understand it better.
And it's kind of authorizing the, the SU to
Okay.
Take the authority to follow through on our contract-driven responsibilities. That's what it's, you are giving them the authority to do that.
I, you know, I misunderstood, so.
Yeah, so did I, and that's, that's, I understand it now.
That we give this authorization
I need a second.
To the superintendent.
But, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I understand it now. It just isn't, it isn't spelled out that way.
Well, and.
And I think it should be.
And again, what, what, kind of what Jim was saying, it's also not to define a certain group of people here, or to say it's going to affect people in your building, because that is not clear at this moment. But it means that the superintendent needs the authority to follow through on contract obligations, if that needs to be done.
So can we have that put in there? Is it, does it sound like it's a document that needs to be a little larger than just?
Uh, it's not really a document. It's really just, we authorize the superintendent to follow through on any possible reductions of in force according to contract.
Do you want to put that in motion? Yes. Say it again. So I move that we authorize the superintendent to issue letters outlining a possible reduction in force as required by contract.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
SVSU employees?
Yes.
SVSU employees. Thank you.
Your second.
I'm not sure.
Not sure?
I'm not sure there's a second.
Well, there's not a second, so it's, we're not taking action on it, then, if there's no second. So I guess we'll get clarity.
That's okay, yeah, we can come back.
Yeah, we'll get clarity, and, okay. All right. We're going to move to the consent agenda. And we have the minutes, warrants, and the nomination. We'll take the minutes first. Any changes to the annual meeting minutes are there? What's that?
There, there's a typo.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no. There is.
Where?
Oh, no.
Oh, stop. Say it ain't so. I've got a correction to the four minutes.
First page, first page, line 33.
Of March 34th?
Oh, you are there. That didn't, this, that was, remember, everybody got a, I said, my spell check, my autocorrect made the most, the best worst correction? And I sent out a revised set of minutes? And, and the revised set of minutes?
Corrected.
These are not them. This was the, this was, this was the best.
This was the first.
This was the first.
Right.
That Jim became the alternate, the SVSU alternate reprehensive. I said that was a really great. Oh, man.
And I think he just planted it there again, so that I would find it. He tried to tell me something.
Oh, God.
And the, I think that, Richard, I did say.
Yes, and that was the correction I was going to make.
The floor meeting?
Yeah.
I was, I did attend.
That Donna was at, Donna was at the floor meeting?
I, I was not, and it's not listed that I was absent.
Um, do you want to be listed as absent?
Not really.
I just thought, you know, I mean, I'm calling, you know, a reprehensive.
Yes.
Anybody else on any of the minutes?
I took it as members.
All set on the minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Warrants?
Yes.
We have, okay, we have warrants, number 19, for $1,443.52. We have warrant number 1,019, for $45,173.14. Number 1020, at $73,253.42. Number 2010, at $245,554.34. Any questions or anything on the warrants?
Dave? I have a question about this one, number 19, $1,443. When, I guess I'm just not sure what, what this is. It's a different format, and warrant number nine, voucher number 19.
Those are.
What do these?
Those are checks. They're actually payroll checks.
Payroll checks.
As opposed to direct deposits. So that's why you don't see.
Okay. Thank you. There were two other questions.
Okay. Anybody else on the warrants? Okay. Next, we have nomination.
Do we need to vote on those?
What's that?
Do we need to vote on the consent?
I'm going to, at the end, can we do?
Oh, okay, got it.
We have a nomination.
Oh, because, okay.
Yeah, yeah. We used to do everything separately, but now I just do it on the one. Okay. We have a gentleman sitting in front of us here. This nomination for Jeffrey D. Johnson to be our new principal. And so I'll need a motion. So, okay, and a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Is this just the principal?
Yeah.
Or is this the consent?
This is on the consent agenda, which, there is a nomination to accept the. So it's everything? Yeah, it's everything. Yep.
Has extensions.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any abstentions?
I have an abstention. I'm all in favor of the principal. I abstain on the warrants, but, so I have to abstain on the whole thing, but welcome, and I really appreciate that you're here.
I do, too. Welcome and all that stuff.
Did you get that?
Yeah. Jeff, yes. You should try, you want to say a few words?
Um, I'm very excited to join Shasberry community, school community. I want to thank the search committee for one. I know what kind of effort that takes. I was in the search committee for our principal of the middle school last year, so I know it's a lot of time and a lot of effort, and you guys had a wonderful interview with you guys, and I really enjoyed it. I want to thank the staff this afternoon. I got a chance to meet with them in the staff meeting. And I'm looking forward to learning about them more and getting to relationships with them. And I'm eager to start with the kids. My kids are very excited. I have two kids here, in second and in fifth grade, and they're pretty eager to see their dad in school every next year. I want to thank Jim. He's offered plenty of support through his transition, and so I'm looking forward to working with him in the next couple of months to kind of make the transition as smooth as possible. And I want to thank the board for, for accepting my nomination, and looking forward to working with you as well.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
I, I would just add to, welcome, and I just enjoyed the process so much, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that for, for and with the board and for the community. And Jeff, I just wanted to tell you how much, you know, I got the opportunity to call references, and it just bubbles over how much people respect you and feel that you are going to be such a wonderful principal here, and the care that you give to everyone around you, to adults and to children, and that you are just genuinely loved by so many people you are leaving behind.
I'm going to miss it.
So I just wanted to tell you that everyone is just saying, oh, wow. Now how long will we do? So I just wanted you to know. They really care for you.
Thanks.
Very good. All righty. All right. Next is the committee reports. Okay. Larry, you want to do SVSU, or do you want me to?
All yours.
Okay. At our last, last SVSU meeting, we had a presentation on improving student achievement pre-K through 12. Karen Burnell gave the, a presentation on monitoring early childhood progress, and Donna Lee gave the response to intervention principles and strategies for effective instruction. And from Monument Elementary, a working model, Donna Colley, the principal, gave that presentation. Basically, went over policy, and the rest of it was like a business meeting, and we did talk about the process of evaluating the superintendent. We have to have that completed by the April 24th. Unless you've got something else, Larry, that's about it.
What is the, what is the process for the evaluation of this? What is the, what is the process for the evaluation of this superintendent?
I, I have this right here, I'm gonna hand out at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So it's by, um, each board member?
Yes.
And then you go back to the SU?
Yes, yes, that's correct. With all the, uh, answers that we have written down.
Fran?
Okay.
Fran?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there any, uh, I don't know what the schedule is for the SVSU board meetings, but are there any plans to discuss going back and revisiting the budget in light of other districts' concerns about their own budgets?
There's been some talk about that, there hasn't really been a plan of when or how, or if we're gonna do that. I think everybody's kinda like a wait see, to see what's gonna happen with BSD and, and, uh, what they do if they come back, if SU is even gonna give them any cuts or anything, so I, I don't know. Donna, what do you think?
Oh, I did, did you wanna speak to the, you know, there was one, um, request made...
Sure, go ahead.
At the last meeting, that North Bennington asked that their, um, assessment be reduced by, uh, fifty thousand?
Yeah, fifty thousand, we voted that down, yeah.
Uh, because of many discussions that they had in terms of what the assessments cover, and some of the things that they felt were not going to be expenses that they would incur, they asked if the SU would, uh, just reduce their assessment by a flat fee of fifty thousand dollars, because they felt that made it more in line with what some other area, uh, non-operating school districts did pay for their assessments to their SU boards.
Right.
And the SU board did not approve that.
Right.
They took a vote, did not approve that.
And, and one of the, the questions I had about that is that to save them fifty thousand, may, could cost us fifty or sixty thousand if, however, we gotta track their students and anything else that has to do with that school, so there could be a cost, it may not be a save...
Oh, yes.
Wouldn't be any savings to us.
To the SU.
Right. So, I mean, anyway. Okay.
Were they looking for specific items? Did they have a detailed list of items that they were looking?
Yeah, basically, the, what they were assessed from the business office.
Like if I said, "I didn't want payroll anymore, I'm gonna get it contracted with somebody else."
Yeah, that's been talked about, stuff like that.
So things like that, it was detailed?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And the, and the SU either decided not to accommodate that, or couldn't accommodate that?
Right, we voted, there was a vote taken, and we voted it down.
Okay.
Uh, BSD did say that they may be coming back to the SU to see what they could get for reductions on assessments, but I haven't heard anything since then, and did BSD meet this week, or?
They have been, they're meeting tonight, Mr. Minister.
Oh, okay, that's, now we know where Rick is. Okay. So basically, that's about it, at this point.
Fran?
Yes.
So you said there was a talk on improving student achievement?
Yes.
Uh, anything interesting you wanna tell us about that?
Donna, you could probably talk more about it than I can.
How much would you like me to talk to you?
How do you improve student achievement?
I think, um, I was, actually, we have met with the directors and the principals in terms of the many action steps that we are taking across the district in, in improving achievement. Uh, we have been working with a, um, the Vermont Department of Education and a coach that we have that's working with the principals to, uh, use a tool called Green Mountain Star, which helps us to look at indicators and objectives that we need to use to improve, uh, performance in the schools, and then establishing goals for each school in terms of what do we feel are the most important things at each school. So, um, all of the schools, um, are working similarly, but they each have their own unique needs, and, and their goals are, are expressed accordingly. But they, uh, are really following, um, a, a method that, that I was, that I represented at the board meeting, that's called Response to Intervention, which is really looking at data carefully and monitoring how students are doing on assessments, either summative assessments like a NECA or an S-BAC or, um, any other nationally normed test, and also looking at formative assessments, which are assessments that you would be doing for each student on an ongoing way. Um, we do MAP testing, which is done three times a year, which can be used. Uh, and we also use what's called AIMS Web to monitor closely, uh, students' early literacy skills. Are you using AIMS Web here somewhat? Yes. Um, so, and then using that data to, um, monitor student progress and then approach that according to the instruction that they individually need to make progress. So, uh, that's called a Response to Intervention, or RTI model. And we are implementing that, um, in various degrees throughout the schools, and we're trying to, um, help the boards be more aware of what that looks like and how to, um, monitor, uh, instruction so that it approaches that model in as many ways as we can.
Anything about use of education technology to...
Yes, and that's coming up at our next board meeting. We have a series of meetings that we're trying to address major topics that, um, the directors and the principals have come up with in terms of steps that we're taking to try to improve student performance. So there will be, at each SVSU meeting, uh, through June, there will be, um, a different presentation based on the major categories that we came up with to represent how we're improving student performance. I hope you come to the technology lab, it'd be a great addition.
I will.
And that is gonna be, um, a major undertaking, because the new test, the new state test that is coming out in two thousand fifteen is called the S-BAC, and it is going to be administered, uh, through technology, which is our next step forward, so we're gonna have to look at many ways that we apply that and, and educate the students about using technology and having the tools to be able to do that.
Quick question, um, is it, is it a new concept that each school is, has their own student achievement goals? Or is that how it practices now? Like, does Shastbury have its own individual achievement student, student goals?
Uh, well, there are many different layers of that. In our state tests, we all have the same goals to meet AYP, Annual Yearly Progress. But in terms of taking that down to each individual level, or each class level, or school level, uh, that can look different in terms of, like, if we use a MAP test as the assessment data to monitor progress, then we would, we can really gear that very specifically for what each child needs. So their progress can be shown, not just according to a once-a-year standardized test, but according to, well, how are they doing on their geometry standards in, in their math, and where do they need extra help? So it can be very personalized.
Good, good.
Okay, anybody else? We're on to the, there's no policies, so we're on to the... Go ahead, Richard.
We did have a policy meeting...
Oh, okay.
Back in March. The only policy that's actually been adopted across the board, I believe, is sixty-one forty-eight, which is the internet use policy. Okay, there's, uh, if you check your, uh, the SVSU website, there's some interesting policies coming up for review, for discussion. Hope folks take the opportunity to look those over and get back to us if there's pieces of that conversation you want us to have. An alcohol and drug-free, uh, environment is going to be an interesting one, so...
The policies, are you doing those at central office?
The meeting itself?
Yes. Yeah, and the time?
Usually, uh, the second Wednesday, four o'clock.
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Four thirty, okay. Okay, so anybody wants to go there to, um, find them?
Thank you.
Question? Go ahead, Tim.
What did you decide about internet policy?
It was adopted.
Any, any important bullet points you'd wanna tell us about that?
I didn't see a lot of change in it, Tim. It was pretty much as presented, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about it. I don't have it here, or I'd be happy to go with the changes with you, but...
So essentially, the model of restricting internet to, to, uh, make sure kids only see what we want them to see is, maybe the policy?
Without it sitting right here, Tim? Catching those points?
It's probably forced to happen, in the policy.
Okay, now Jim. Principal three-fourth?
Well, it's great to have Jeff Johnson aboard as new principal, starting July one. Uh, we've had some great meetings together already.
Fine, I didn't think so, but I wanted to hear.
We, uh, we have met, um, our plan, based upon Jeff's schedule, uh, so that he can continue to do his job, uh, we'll meet, uh, every Friday, uh, from about one-thirty, quarter to two until four o'clock. We have already identified about fifteen topics in which we are going to try to cover and make sure everything is in order. Our office and myself have created a packet for Jeff to spend the entire vacation reading. There will be a test on there, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Online.
So, uh, it's gone...
Once I come out, can we get a sentence?
It's gone real well, um, and, uh, we'll work out times when Jeff will be here during the school day and children will see him long before the end of the school year on many of our, our days. The other thing that I would, uh, share with you that's not on here is that, um, we did have contact with the state concerning the Route seven A light beacon that flashes during the school crossing times. A representative did come down from, uh, northern Vermont and, uh, shared a key that now opens up the timer for the beacon.
Oh, boy.
And we have that in the office, and Jay was, uh, was given some professional development on how to change the timing, and it seems to be working, uh, very well. It is on state property, so other than changing time, the state is responsible for that and, and, uh, at no cost to us.
Tim has a question.
Yeah, at, at the risk of being the wet blanket, the, the light which was blinking on, uh, standard time, and since Jay got his training, it started blinking on daylight savings time. But today, when I drove by at three, it was not blinking.
Great. Then I, I'll let Jay know, and he'll go and check in at the mall. Thanks.
Okay.
The, uh, the movable sign for the crossing, had a conversation with the Department of Transportation. The only, um, the only legal sign is what exists out there that approved. You can't put, um, um, a school-made, homemade, kind of whatever you'd like out there, so we're, we're set on that. But we have to have the same sort of agreement that was signed by Fran for the beacon that we've not had for, I don't know how long. Um, and the department chair was moving from Napier to Berlin, and so once that move has taken place, he'll send a copy for Fran to sign, and then we can start putting that in, uh, in the crosswalk during crossings. The other thing I have is turning over to Tim, who will, who's taken the lead, um, on a very interesting school event.
Yeah, it's called Safe Routes to School is the program, and, uh, what we're aiming for is to participate as a school in the Vermont statewide Walk and Bike to School Day, which is coming up on May first. This came about with the work that we've been doing on the intersection. Larry and I, uh, have been to meetings, and a couple of times, people spoke to us about the Safe Routes to School program as something that we ought to look at to tie into the work that we're doing there. The, the Safe Routes to School program aims to get kids walking and biking to school for health and well-being from exercise. It, it has side benefits of reducing pickup and drop-off congestion and improving the environment and, and all those things, but, uh, that's the main benefit it seeks, is to, to get kids walking and biking to school like us old folks did in the old days. And, uh, so we're, uh, we're spinning up, I've got a team of people together who are gonna help me put on the event, and, uh, what we're, we're, we're gonna start small with just a, a, a one kinda parade to school. They call it a Safe Routes, a, a walking school bus. So, we're gonna meet down at T and M on May first and, um, as a group, walk up and then stop at Cleveland Avenue and pick up the kids that, uh, went to walk in from Cleveland Avenue, and then parade on into school, and kids will get, uh, um, some surprises for participating. We hope to have, uh, hot chocolate for everyone that day. And, uh, what, what I hope, and I think, uh, some of us that are, uh, excited about the program hope is that it'll, it'll take hold, that kids will like it, and by all accounts, from the... I, I went to the Safe Routes annual meeting recently, by all accounts, the kids love the idea. And, uh, even in places where you wouldn't think walking and biking would work, kids love the idea, and they, they figure out a way to make it work. But, uh, long-term, uh, we would incorporate biking into it, uh, safety training, and, uh, looking at, uh, the wider area of Shastbury and where kids would be able to walk and bike, and where the impediments to, to that happening would be, so, um, that's, that's the idea. May first, like I say, is, uh, statewide Walk and Bike to School Day, and we're hoping to spin our program up and participate that, and hopefully generate a lot of enthusiasm among the, the kids and the staff, and keep it rolling with, uh, with future things that you can do. Like I say, incorporating bikes, and then all kinds of incentive programs. Uh, one of my favorites is one they call Bow Wow, which is Bike on Wednesday, Walk on Wednesday. And, uh, just, uh, things to incentivize the kids to, to, to get out and get some exercise in the morning.
Couple of questions. Um, I'm wondering, do we have recent data that shows how many kids regularly walk or bike? And I'm assuming, this is the question, I guess, and then, imagine that the, because we don't bus people who live closer than a mile, is it?
Mm-hmm.
That, I mean, I, you can ride a bike more than a mile, I realize, but that, that, sort of, the target population are the people who are currently being driven to school by the parents. Is that...
Yeah.
We do have, uh, data from the fall for children walking and biking, um, averaging between eight to, eight to twenty-five students on any given day, morning and afternoon, not combined, but morning and then the same amount in the afternoon. I did share that with Tim. That data will go to the state and to, to the grant that he's putting together, or the, the information that he's getting. We also received, um, for this Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, every classroom, um, is being surveyed. Every child is giving information about how they, how they came to school. And then we're putting on that survey that came from the state, the, the weather, and that will play a, uh, that will play a role into how many children may have walked. Tim and I sat with the office folks, and we were able to identify the total number of students who can ride the bus, total number of students that, um, are within that walking distance. So we do have that, we do have that done, we did that this week.
And, and another thing that, I get impressed by the people and the staff here at this school all the time, but another thing, when I went into gym and asked to, uh, to, you know, find out, you know, how many people live within a mile, two miles, uh, he and Colleen pulled out the list of students, and they still went through it. He lives here, he's in a mile, he's outside of a mile, he's inside of a mile. Between the two of them, they know where everybody lives. I think that's pretty impressive.
That's your homework, Jeff. Why that's the list?
I would say, Tim, they also, that Safe Routes to School offers some very nice, um, training for just pedestrian safety, which for, um, I think they target the second grade, but I'm sure they would do other grades as well. And, um, I found it very, very helpful. So if you find that that's a resource, uh, for this area, it's something that's worth looking into, because they, um, really teach children to be aware of their own body, and that they're in charge of their own body's safety, which we all would think, oh, well, that's obvious, and they all know that. But it really is sort of a new awareness to them that, no, mom and dad aren't watching you when you step out into the street or from behind a car, and they really teach them about how they need to survey the area around their own body and how to be safe, um, walking and riding your bike. So it really was very beneficial, just, if you can look into that.
Yes, at the Safe Routes annual meeting, they talked a lot about, um, the Walk Smart, Bike Smart Vermont, uh, program, which is, uh, the, the safety training. And, uh, yes, we hope to incorporate that. Uh, I didn't see us having time to get that in before May one, and that's part of the reason we're leaving biking out of it at this point. But, yeah, assuming that this takes off and people wanna do more of it, uh, the next step would be the, the safety training for pedestrians and bikers. would be the safety training for pedestrians and bikers.
The other thing I would want the board to know, a real thank you to the technology department at the SU who is working with Tim to provide the state with where are our students, not by name, but general location, to see if they come down and need to take a ride. How many students would actually be traveling on that particular road in that VersiTrans program? And the technology department has been so, so helpful. So I would want to thank Frank and his folks who have been working with us.
And Milton?
Yes.
And leading into, are we talking anymore about Tim?
Thank you, Fran. That's it.
Okay. Donna, you're up.
Oh. I will just add a little to the information tonight. Fran and I both attended a meeting last night about the essential work of Vermont school boards. And it was really to describe the role of school boards and how you help schools function, how to set up a vision and a mission and what, how to really work with the school in many different facets and roles of authority and how to help define that. So I did get an extra document for you here. It's very helpful and has a lot of resources in it. I think there even, there are pieces about evaluations and about negotiation and how to be an effective school board and run good meetings. It's just a nice resource, so I got you an extra copy. Do you want to add anything to that, Fran?
No, you said it well.
And I think that's all I have for tonight. We've covered a lot.
Alrighty. Chair's report. I talked with Karen Mullinger of the Shastberry Select Board and asked her about the generator agreement that we had written up. I think everybody had a copy, but I didn't bring one with me tonight, but she seemed to think that that was sufficient enough, so I think we'll go with that. Jim touched on about the flashing light. I did sign that and that's a copy of that's now on record here at the school. And Larry and I attended the last Select Board meeting, and we have been told that there is, the town will be sending us a water bill of $6,000 for the leak that was outside. I still don't have the, I didn't know what the cost to dig up the pipe was out here. Since then, Jim has gotten some prices on, or the bill on that. And there's a part that they had to use a sleeve or something, put over the pipe to repair that for now. The board did take a vote at the Select Board, saying they were, did want, school board, excuse me, to pay the $6,000. So, yeah, I think I need it.
I'll give you a break for a second.
Thank you.
If it doesn't come out of the school budget, it's going to come out of the town budget.
Right.
And it's not exactly the same because there are differences in the way schools are funded, the way the town is funded, but just one way to think about it.
Right. Well, I told them I'd bring it before the board and when we get everything together, we'll take a vote on what we're going to do and go from there. Larry?
Fran, did you mention that it was actually the Water Board that we attended?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I said the Select Board.
It wasn't the Select Board. Water Board's made up.
You're right.
The Select Board.
Karen.
Official action is for the Water Board to send us the bill for our consideration.
And then I talked with Joe Herman. He did have, there's a, this Mark Youngstrom at Otter Creek Engineering is going to be coming, in fact, we asked Joe to come before the meeting too, to talk to us about the different pipes and things, how to repair this. And before the talk was, we were going to have to come off the end of the building over here, off the gym, and go across the parking lot, across the road to that hydrant. But we figured, and even Joe Herman had mentioned, we have the hydrant over here in front of the school where the walkway is. You can go from there to that corner of the building and it'd be a heck of a lot cheaper. Plus the fact, if we're going to do this, there's no sense in black topping out there because we're going to be digging over there and on the side to the back to where the generator is in the rear of the building too. So it makes more sense to find out what that's going to cost us and make a decision what we're going to do, whether to change that line now or wait. I have no idea what the cost of that's going to be, so we're going to have to do that. And other than...
Mary just had a very good point.
Yep.
And I'll just say, so the board can think, number one, the water did not go through the meter that serves the school.
That's right.
That would be the first thing. And I think your point is good, David, is someone's going to pay for it, but it did not go through our meter. The second point would be, is if, in fact, we do have to pay for $6,000 worth of water that did not go through our meter.
Right.
We should investigate the possibility of insurance claim because there was a break.
Yeah.
So I think that there are many issues that we need to investigate before we just pay this bill.
Right.
So it's coming to us as consideration, upward consideration, so.
We could refuse to pay it.
Right.
The fault was, I think they covered it, but if we paid it, it's a town-wide expense. A little bit of that bill goes to all the property owners rather than just the small group of actual water users there are in Shastberry. Jim, to your point, while it didn't go through a meter here at the school, it did go through North Bennington's treatment plant. They were able to track what they felt is a reasonable, to give us a reasonable estimate of the amount of water that was lost. It wasn't like it's a wild guess. They have some data to back that up with, which sounded convincing. I mean, I don't think they're a pretty good group of guys and they did some great work for us. So it's still on the table.
When we get all of the costs and stuff, we can discuss that after the fact. That's all I had. One other thing. In your packet...
All you had.
Well, I know. Well, it just dawned on me here. I'm having a... In your packet, you have the, your names with your emails and phone numbers and stuff. Just make sure that's correct. But David, I think you're right. I've seen the email about the 2015 and the 14.
Yeah.
I think it is backwards.
Well, I know you have a three-year term.
Right.
And that you and I both ran last year, so.
Yeah. Okay, so that needs to be changed.
So Pat, you have a three, you have a three-year too?
No, I'm out with 14. I think I'm up next year for election.
Okay.
It was a three-year term.
It was.
Yep, it's a three-year term. So it's you and me next year. Okay.
Make sure that's all set.
Yep.
Now that's all I had, other than the future meeting dates that are there, May 8 and June 12. And if anybody has any other, we'll need a motion to go into executive session for ESP negotiations.
Still 6:00 though, right?
Personnel.
Still 6:00.
Yes, yes. Meetings are at six. Absolutely.
That works. Just checking, just making sure.
So I'll need that motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. And, yeah. Okay.